Meeting will come to order. Today is Tuesday, July 26, 2016. This is a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Welcome. We've got a lot of ground to cover. We just spent two hours with a study session, so I think we'll move along here fairly quickly. Do you have any introductions? We're approaching.
Oh, my. I've got a whole room full of them. I could probably take another hour and a half if you'd like. All right, now let's move on.
Okay. Invitational today would be Rabbi Adely Potkin from the Temple Beth Torah. And I'll lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Adele? Not. That's the second time I've done that with you. Apes, I hope that the break actually gave you a chance to take a good, deep breath. You certainly do look a lot less tense. And this is a preface. Just as a preface, I did want to say that basically what I'm hearing is that if we approach everything with love and respect, then we have a very high possibility of getting love and respect in return, whereas if we start using unpleasant language and things like that, that's only going to encourage others to do that. And that whole situation is tied into that whole big bunch of stuff we just heard. And I do hope that you all can smile with me and that everyone here can feel welcomed, welcomed, loved, and respected. Honorable Mayor Ober, council members and staff, community members and friends, I stand before you today in awe over the courage you display in taking on the concerns of this community. It is comforting to know that you are addressing, among others, the issues of public safety and other basic needs of the people, such as sanitation. We pray that you, our leaders, continue to be blessed with understanding and creativity in order to succeed in addressing these concerns. As you go about the business of handling government interests, may you be guided with compassion and respect for all in the community, as well as deep caring for the environment and its resources, resources which need to be protected so that they are available for use not only by us now, but also by future generations. May you continue sensitive encouragement of those who protect us, such as law enforcement and fire officials, not only in your sessions, but also in other venues, such as in the appreciation luncheon tomorrow. May you never forget that support and good communications with all encourages all participates to do their best possible. Let us all now affirm these fervent prayers, each of us agreeing in his or her own way, so may it be. So may it be.
Please draw me the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, for God's sake, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Ober.
Here.
Mayor Protam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilwoman Shisika.
Here.
And Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
City Manager, do you have any announcements?
I have no public announcements, Mayor.
I'll make one quick announcement for those that might not have had an opportunity to meet our new Police Chief. I'd like to introduce Chief Deborah Black. Could you stand up for a moment, just so people see who you are? Can we have a couple of proclamations?
Proclamation A, proclaiming August 2016 as Child Support Awareness Month. We had a representative to accept this, but I, he was on his way from Phoenix, but I don't think he's made it, so. Any of our staff? Chief Black, would you like to accept the proclamation?
So, this is a proclamation for Child Support Awareness Month, and law enforcement does have a role in this, that's why I asked Chief Black. Whereas children need parental support and stability from both parents for their financial, emotional, and physical growth, and whereas establishing strong partnerships between community and parents is necessary when it comes to identifying valuable resources for parents and caretakers, and whereas the community partnership serves children and families through a variety of programs and targeted resources which help support Arizonans by promoting awareness of needs and assistance to meet those needs, while encouraging individual responsibility and working toward greater self-sufficiency. And whereas children need to feel safe and secure in order to believe in themselves and know they have a future, and whereas strengthening individuals and families with an emphasis on physical accountability promotes the safety and well-being of children, promotes stability, improves the lives of children, and provides opportunities for families to be able to enhance their children's future. And whereas an informed parent can help make the child support system work, and with the state, local, and tribal child support programs, legislatures, and courts rallying to improve collaborative efforts for families, and whereas with the focus on a change in culture, the Arizona Department of Economic Security Division of Child Support Services is committed to engaging with parents and families through improved accessibility, providing personal development and employment opportunities to assist Arizonans to reach their full potential, humbly serving Arizonans with excellence, respect, integrity, and kindness, and being a champion for economic growth and opportunity. Now therefore, I, Harry B. Ober, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, do hereby proclaim August 2016 as Child Support Awareness Month.
Item B, proclaiming August 6, 2016 as Vietnam Veterans Day in the City of Prescott.
Thanks for coming up, Phil. You know how much I love soldiers.
We do.
You bet. You know, it was my turn. My whole family are military people. My turn, I didn't get to play, I was four F. I love soldiers, police, and fire. And to you, Rabbi, thank you very much for a very inspiring comment to show you how much love is in this room. I was freezing when I came in. A very dear friend of mine let me wear his jacket so I wouldn't freeze up here on a hill.
You're losing some stuff.
Oh, well, it's hard to hold this and put on glasses at the same time, you know what I mean? This is Vietnam Veterans Day in the City of Prescott, August 6, 2016. Whereas, I see a lot of veterans sitting out here, and I love you, every one of you. 2.6 million men and women served the United States Military in Vietnam from 1965 to 1973 during the Vietnam War. And whereas, 58,724 men and women died serving the United States during the Vietnam War. And whereas, only about 30% of the nation's Vietnam veterans are still alive today. And whereas, 97% of Vietnam veterans who served, there were honorably discharged on their service. And whereas, Vietnam veterans received no welcome, nor were honored for their service after the war ended. Whereas, most Vietnam veterans made significant contributions to their communities, state, and nation during their military post, and during their military service. And whereas they reside in the City of Prescott, many military veterans, which include many Vietnam War veterans. Whereas, the Tonkin Gulf Resolution was passed by the United States Congress on August 6, 1964, authorizing then-President Lyndon Johnson to arguably begin the Vietnam War. And whereas, it is only right and proper, the City of Prescott and its residents recognize and honor its Vietnam veterans for their service and sacrifice. Therefore, Harry Ober, Mayor of the City of Prescott, proclaims August 6, 2016 as Vietnam Veterans Day in the City of Prescott, and encourages citizens to recognize and honor these Vietnam veterans of the City of Prescott, especially on this day. And you can see, he signed it, and the City of Prescott seal is here. Thank you, Phil. Thank you for being here to accept it. And I ask you to say something.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, for this recognition of the service and sacrifice for our city's Vietnam veterans. As this proclamation references on August 6th, it will be 52 years since the U.S. Congress passed the Tonkin Gulf Resolution, giving President Lyndon Johnson the war powers authority to begin the military escalation that led to the Vietnam War. A few months after that date, I recall writing a paper in my eighth-grade English class, justifying our involvement in that war due to our country's obligation to defend Vietnam because of our commitment under the Southeast Asia Treaty Organization. I never thought at the time that it would have any impact on me, but six years later, I would be fighting that war myself, in those godforsaken jungles. When the U.S. military left Vietnam in 1973, we had won every major battle. The North Vietnamese had been essentially defeated and had agreed to a peace treaty honoring South Vietnam sovereignty. But there were no parades or welcome homes for Vietnam vets. The anti-war movement, which led to the U.S. Congress's shameful abandonment of the South Vietnamese and their defeat in 1973, was focused on a way of returning vets. We were ridiculed, insulted, ostracized, called baby killers, even spat upon. We then put our uniforms away and very quietly went on our way, building careers, raising families, and contributing to our community. About five years ago, I was asked to march in an Independence Day, Fourth of July Parade by a Vietnam Vet buddy. We were both given the honor of leading our group by carrying our military branch's flags. He carried the U.S. Marine Corps, I the U.S. Army's. About a mile into the parade march, he looked over at me and said, "Phil, you finally got For both of us, it was over 40 years past due. Over 70% of our nation's Vietnam veterans have already passed into history. This proclamation is but a small token of the debt we owe these honorable men and women for their service, their sacrifice, and the physical and emotional scars that many carry to this day. All my Vietnam brothers, would you please stand? Every day, I hope that you'll thank a Vietnam, a veteran for their service, but on August 6th, please may I say a special thank you and welcome home to these and all Vietnam veterans. And thank you, the City of Prescott, for this recognition.
Thank you, Prescott.
Mayor Ober, I believe the gentleman here is to accept the Child Support Awareness Month proclamation has arrived. If he'd like to say a few words, and I'm sorry, I forgot your.
It's okay. My name is Gerald Richard. I'm the Assistant Director with the Division for Child Support Services with the Department of Economic Security. We want to thank you and all the council for the support, as far as our children first, children always, for Child Awareness Month this August. We're going to have a big kickoff down in Phoenix, but on July the 30th, but we would love to be able to come back here sometime during August or shortly thereafter, and do the same here for the City of Prescott. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to item one.
Item one, consent agenda. Item A, approval of minutes for the July 12 council meetings. Item B, approval to purchase fire department personnel protective equipment from L. N. Curtis &amp; Sons. Item C, award of contract to Classic Garage Floor Coatings for coating the floor at Fire Station Number 71. Item D, a word of contract to BMW Fire Security Systems for fire alarm intrusion monitoring and fire suppression services at various city facilities. Item E is adoption of ordinance number 49901528, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the purchase and acceptance of a public utility easement from Joe and Jesse Poblano, and authorizing the Mayor and Staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said purchase and acceptance. Item F is adoption of ordinance number 49881526, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a water line easement from the Antelope Hills Congregation of Jehovah's Witness, and authorizing the Mayor and Staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance. Item G is award of contract to the Thatcher Company of Arizona Incorporated for the purchase of aluminum sulfate and sodium hydroxide. Item H is adoption of resolution number 4347-1556, approving amendment number one to the IGA with the Arizona Department of Revenue regarding administration of privilege and use taxes. Item I is approval of annual support and maintenance for Zetron Incorporated Public Safety Dispatch System software. Item J is adoption of resolution number 4349-1558, approving an IGA with the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office for access and use of the Code Red Emergency Notification System at Prescott Regional Communications Center. And item K is adoption of resolution number 4344-1553, setting the annual business license fee.
Okay, do I have a move to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, if I could, have item K removed from the consent agenda? Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items A through J.
Okay, motion, second vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Okay. Item K, any discussion?
Item K, Mayor, I just wanted to be consistent with my prior vote to this issue and have a chance to have a vote alone, or standalone vote on that, just for the record.
Okay. Do you have a motion to accept item K?
Do we, I have a question. Do we need to run through exactly what's in item K? I think it might be.
Okay.
Good to hear it real quick.
Sure, thank you, Councilman Blair. Item K is, back on May 3rd, we set the business license regulations and all this. Item K is just establishing the annual fee. It's not setting the, all the things you did back in May, those were all set then. This is just setting the actual fee.
Mr. Mayor, I move the adoption of resolution number 4344-1553, setting the annual business license fee.
Second.
Yeah, motion, second vote, please.
Passed, 4 to 3, Councilman Blair, Councilman Lamerson, and Councilman Lozelle dissenting.
Okay, I'll go to item two.
Item two, the liquor license consent agenda. On today's liquor license consent agenda, there are two applications for a Series 15 Special Event Liquor License. Item A is Changing Childhood Poverty Coalition for Compassion and Justice, and item B is the Charlotte Hall Historical Society of Arizona fundraiser. And then there are two applications for a Series 16 Fair Festival Special Event Liquor License, and those are Thumbbutt Distillery and Desert Diamond Distillery. These two Series 16 applications are associated with the Charlotte Hall fundraiser that is being held on August 20th, and a Fair Festival license allows a craft distillery to serve products they produce within the premises of a licensed special event. So all four of these applications have been determined to be in compliance with city requirements and are being recommended for approval. I'd like to answer any questions. And they can be voted on as one item.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to forward special event liquor license applications to the Arizona State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion, second vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Regular agenda.
Item 3A, public hearing and consideration of a person and location transfer liquor license application for a Series 6 bar liquor license from Patricia Cecilia Briggs, applicant for Prescott Public House located at 218 West Gurley Street. This is a request for a person and location transfer of a Series 6 bar license. The new owner of the liquor license is Patricia Cecilia Briggs, and the location is at 218 West Gurley Street. The police department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with state law, and the community development department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with zoning requirements and building safety issues. The application and license fees have been paid, and the application has been posted at the proposed location for the required 20 days. No public comments have been received, and I believe the applicant or representative is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Come on down, tell us a little bit about your business.
Hello, my name is Mark Walters. I'm the new proprietor of what we're calling the Prescott Public House. We are taking the location of what was previously known as the Drunken Lass at 218 West Gurley Street and giving it a nice makeover. We're open seven days a week from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 a.m. We offer, I guess to give you an ideology of what I came up from doing, I really believe in hospitality, and I really like the old Irish tradition of a public house, you open your house to the public. So I'd really like that to be something that I bring to this community. I thought it was slightly lacking in that type of twist. So I came up from the valley where I've lived for a bunch of years, operating bars on Mill Avenue for a gentleman by the name of Julian Wright, who did a bunch of different projects up and down Mill Avenue for a long time. He's a good friend of mine and a mentor, and I learned most of what I do from him. And I really believe in creating just a clean, safe space, no TVs on, so people actually sit and talk and socialize. I have lots of board games. I redid the back patio to make it a nice welcoming space, and I just really look forward to bringing the hospitality to downtown Prescott area.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Well, we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Yeah, motion, second vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Do you have a second motion?
Mayor, I move to approve for recommendation the liquor license application number 06130042 for a Series 6 bar license for Prescott Public House located at 218 West Gurley Street.
Second. Motion, second vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Item B.
Item B, approval of payment of Upper Verde Watershed Protection Coalition membership dues in the total amount of $104,000 for fiscal years 2016 and 2017 alternate water
Good afternoon, Mayor Ober and council. I'm Leslie Grazer, the Water Resource Manager for the city. Today I have a brief presentation to provide a progress report related to the membership dues paid by the city as part of the Upper Verde Watershed Protection Coalition, or as we just like to call it, the Coalition. As with all benefits gained, excuse me, as with all memberships, it's important to review the dues paid and the benefits gained from such affiliations. The content of this presentation was presented at the last quarterly meeting of the Coalition Board in April, and Councilman Blair represents the city on this board. I'll move quickly through these, but happy to answer questions along the way. This is the basic information of the Coalition. It was established in 2006. The members include Yavapai County, Prescott, Prescott Valley, Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe, and Chino Valley. The purpose is to protect the flows of the Upper Verde River and achieve safe yield in Prescott, in the Prescott A.M. This is a location map, that you are here. This is the focus area of the Coalition. It's the Upper Verde Watershed. Please note that watersheds are defined differently than groundwater basins and sub-basins. Also, please note that the City of Prescott has land ownership in this area. It doesn't seem the pointer's going to work with me today. There we are. So the city has land ownership in this area. The watershed consists of, this is the Prescott Active Management Area, you're sitting about here. There is a sub-basin line that goes through this area. This is the Little Chino Aquifer. It drains up towards the Big Chino. The Big Chino also drains and ultimately goes towards the Verde River. It is important for groups such as the Coalition to grow over time. By grow, I mean that they are watching the current conditions and watch for future possibilities. As you may recall, the Coalition initially applied its funding to work on research endeavors, produce documents, and to hire a consultant to keep its research endeavors moving forward, as no one entity had the staffing to fully support this group. With the next few slides, I'd like to provide information on how this group has grown. The Big Chino Basin and the Little Chino Sub Basin are within the Upper Verde Watershed as we showed in the previous map. After some work was completed in mapping groundwater recharge areas, having literature reviews on mountain front and mountain block recharge, safe yield reports, et cetera, the group has started looking at on-the-ground projects to improve conditions in the watershed. In 2014, a watershed restoration management plan was prepared as a roadmap for the group's project and with new particip, or excuse me, new partnerships that would benefit the lands and the natural resources. So this slide shows it, through the literature review, the understanding of precipitation in the area and the recharge, the goal is ultimately to improve aquifer recharge that is lost, you know, before it's lost to evaporation. And then this is the product, there was a grant received. This brought together a whole group of new partners in this. They, everybody existed, but when you start sitting down and actually talking about commonalities and what you can achieve together, what grants you might be able to work towards, you're going to have better outcomes and reach your endpoints sooner. So the focus was woodland, grassland restoration, enhanced recharge, urban runoff, and aquifer protection. In front of you, you do have a newsletter that the group has been producing, and within that newsletter on page four is a list of the partners. I won't go through all of them at this point, but folks such as Arizona Game and Fish, Forest Service, and the list goes on. So continuing with the recent accomplishments, the Watershed Task Force continues to meet, they're actually meeting tomorrow. We jumped down to the last bullet point, the Slaughterhouse Gulch Restoration Plan. This is actually more led by the Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe. They've been seeking grants, and the city with this Coalition, as being a member of this Coalition, also works to help them get to their endpoints. Slaughterhouse Gulch, just for reference, there's, pardon me, wrong one, a map on this side over here, so this is the intersection and through this area, and Slaughterhouse Gulch runs this way through, then ultimately drains into Granite Creek, and then into the Watson Lake Reservoir. So having improvements along that drainage also helps the city have improvements at Watson Lake Reservoir. So once again, quickly moving ahead, the Watershed Task Force partnerships have led to opportunities for larger discussions that now bring in components related to industries that may use the supplies, the harvested wood materials, while meeting many facets of watershed health and protection, which were identified and further described by the Forest Service as local, restoring local ecosystems, enhancing resiliency of our watersheds, and managing vegetation to reduce risk of catastrophic fires. And for the cities and towns and the unincorporated county areas, this also makes positive progress towards groundwater supply protection and improving recharge. So there's a lot on this slide, and I don't think we can actually go through this all today, but what we're, pardon me, what we're looking at now, there's a very keen interest in biomass industry, and we're seeing this all sowing in the neighboring forests. So there's the Four Fry Project that also, the watersheds that feed into the SRP systems, they have also been looking at how do you manage overgrowth? How do you protect from catastrophic fires? How do you improve your watersheds for improved recharge? So that is a discussion all on its own, and maybe another time if it's appropriate, or I do have some slides if you have questions. Moving forward, this group continues on public outreach, so it works to do that through newsletters, and there's once again a copy in front of you today, Water Smart Radio ads, there's a new website, and we'll just click over to that real quick so you can see what this looks like. Just backing up briefly, the, as I mentioned very quickly, this group had a consultant, more of an engineering type of consultant. more of an engineering type of consultant at one time, who put together all the meetings and did a lot of that coordination and working through things. With this growth that the group has had, they rely on a grant coordinator and the grant person is the one who helps bring together or find those grants where you can have those partnerships with Forest Service and the Coalition, or Game and Fish Forest Service and the Coalition, or the NRCS, the Coalition, and everybody leverages each other, basically. So just briefly, once again, the public meetings are posted on this website. The newsletters are held here, so if you have interest in other topics that the Coalition has been working on, you do have the June one right now and a list of priorities. So the watershed restoration is located on the website here. The last piece again is the newsletter. I guess we can't stress this enough, they've moved towards a positioning where they prepare a newsletter on roughly an every-other-month basis and it actually acts as a documentary record what's been going on and also share it with a wider audience and with the partners. The funding for this, you can see the total membership contributions have been over a million dollars. The partnering a few years ago was this a million dollars that, it was USDA funding, but it was a cooperative of the Coalition with Arizona Game and Fish and this was for taking vegetation removal, reducing the fuel loads in the areas where the city has property and many of the other, especially the county has properties, of course, in those areas. Then there's always indirect contributions, so in-kind that is provided, and this is a list that's not fully quantified, but it shows how not only is there the actual dollar side, but also the staff time that's by all parties that contributes to this group. So current and ongoing projects include funding for Slaughterhouse Gulch. The tribe is moving steadily on that one. Vegetation management, so feedstock analysis, the Ponzi cost-benefit analysis, what does that really mean? This goes back to the biomass, the reduction of vegetation, overgrowth junipers in certain areas, hydrologic effects, can you show that there's actually a benefit for removing those trees, infiltration, and then outreach. Briefly on outreach, since we haven't touched on this, the Coalition has partnered with the Groundwater Users Advisory Committee. That's that acronym GUAC and they are working on a brochure, once again, regional partnership that provides information to the public regarding water supplies and it'll mostly focus on the active management area. The Coalition is present at the Home and Garden Show. They have a streak now of being there for many years and bringing forward rainwater harvesting and other materials to the public at that event. This is my last slide, so this looks back on where the group has been and where it's grown from, and these are some of the things I mentioned very early on, the mapping of key recharge areas, mountain block, mountain front recharge, safe yield work groups, things of that nature. So it's grown to a point where it's seeing that actual on-the-ground projects, they're ready to tackle those kind of things and the building of partnerships beyond just those within the Coalition are proving to be very effective. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have. I know that was a whirlwind tour. John Mundelow with the Town of Prescott Valley is also here. He's the TAC chairman, the Technical Advisory Committee Chairman for the Coalition, is also present if you would like to ask any questions.
Questions, comments from the council? Any from the public?
I think it's important that not only do you read the things that are on the board here, but there is ongoing cooperation with the TAC group and with the Coalition in general to meet with all the local ranchers, whether it be the K-4 Ranch or the Spider Ranch or different ranches out in our watershed that we're working forward and hopefully soon to do some juniper removal and brush removal to take those lands back to where they used to be as far as grasslands. And I'm anxious to see in the future what we believe is the recharge component of allowing the water to get into the water table rather than having the juniper suck up all the water, as well as the economy that's tied into the biomass of the product that we're taking out, being sold on the open market. So there's some really positive things that are going on that we don't really see here. But a lot of people went out and saw the presentation of biomass removal and some of the things and years ago on the K-4 Ranch, the water ranch that we own right now, there was juniper harvesting done back then and that was in 1968 through 72. So that's been many years ago. When you start talking about 40 years, though, those junipers are back and they're back in quantity. So I think what we need to do is continue down this path and hopefully we can make a difference to the Verde River as well as our own water supply.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you to John Mundelow and to Leslie Grazer for all you've done and for the opportunity to go out and see the biomass removal and several trips to the Chino, Big Chino, so thank you for all that you do on this.
Okay, there's no public comment? Like to have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve payment of Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition dues for fiscal years 2016 and 17.
Second.
Yeah, motion and second vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Item C.
Item C, award of city contract number 2017-027 to SAC Construction LLC for cured-and-place sewer pipe rehabilitation in fiscal year 2017 on an individual job order basis utilizing pricing through the Cooperative Purchasing Network, contract number R5143, in an amount not to exceed $750,000 water and sewer fund.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Henry Hatch, Public Works, and Mr. Craig Dossit, our utility manager, is here as well. I don't know if you had an opportunity to see the beautiful truck that was sitting outside of the city hall. One of the nicest pieces the city owns, you know, we, you did approve the purchase of this truck last year. We purchased it about three months ago. And what is this really, our TV camera truck? Basically what it does, it sends the camera inside our sewer pipes, sees the condition based on that, do the analysis, and then the repairs are done. The item before you today is for the repair. Simply put, we have two ways of repairing. The traditional way of opening up the roads, inconveniencing the neighbors, and closing the roads and taking months to do it, two times, two and a half times the cost, or do it this, as we call it, cure-in-place piping. The council approved a very similar, same amount last year. It really works great. The old pipe would turn to be like a brand-new pipe. The expectancy of life is same as a new pipe, if not longer, anywhere from 75 to 100 years. And so here we are. Mr. Craig Dossit basically has the detail if he want to add anything and we have a clip to shoot as well.
Good afternoon. So yes, the item I have here to present this afternoon is the request of, request approval of a city contract to SAC Construction for cured-and-place pipe rehabilitation in fiscal year 17 on an individual job order basis, utilizing pricing through the Cooperative Purchasing Network in an amount not to exceed $750,000. As Henry mentioned, CIPP is the trenchless rehabilitation of sanitary sewer mains by installation of a new pipe inside of the existing pipe, which creates a jointless pipe within a pipe. CIP process is more cost-effective and less intrusive than complete reconstruction. This work is in support of our ongoing program to rehabilitate deteriorated wastewater collections mains. The cured-and-place pipe work will be procured by use of the Cooperative Purchasing Network unit price contract, which was competitively bid. The city's standard form contract for construction services will be used for the project. When council approved the similar contract in fiscal year 16, Public Works Department, utilizing this method, was successful on solving several critical segments of the wastewater collection system, completing almost 10,000 feet during fiscal year 16. Of that, one of the critical points was over 5,000 feet of line that was in Granite Creek from about Hazely Road all the way down Granite Creek to the fire station on White Spar. The pipe runs completely down the creek through there and every bit of that has been rehabilitated utilizing this method. The 2017 projects for which this technology is proposed to be used will include approximately 8,000 feet in a Willow Creek tributary, along Willow Creek Road, and approximately 10,000 lineal feet in Willow Lake State's area. Pending award of the contract and scheduling, initial work could begin as early as August 2016 and extend through March of 2017. SAC Construction LLC provides a warranty for a period of one year from time of final completion and the warranty covers materials and workmanship associated with the CIPP process. Fiscal year 17 funding in the amount of $750,000 for the contract has been budgeted and is available in the wastewater fund. There is a mistake on the agenda. It lists water and streets. It is in, actually in wastewater fund. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Councilman Blair?
Craig, quick question and maybe a very difficult question, but knowing that we're attacking these sewer lines that are in our tributaries that no doubt have been leaking in and are in disrepair and causing sewage infiltration into our lakes, which is part of the algae bloom and some of the problems we have with our lakes, do you have an idea how much, what percentage that will cut back on our problems in those lakes? Or do you, just a quick idea?
As you said, that would be a very hard number.
Right.
To quantify. We, in time, after the project's complete, we'd be able to go back and do additional flow monitoring of those lines and then we would be able to see the reduction. So we can get those answers, we just don't have them today.
So in the future, when you do the analysis, you'll be able to tell? I'd like to know that number because I think we owe it to the fact that we're spending a lot of money underground, which you don't see, but the ultimate goal is to reduce, you know, the broken pipes and to reduce the leakage that are going into the lakes which we own for water and recreation. So I think that the number is very important when you come to the time to find out what that might be.
Okay, we will keep that in mind and bring it back.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Well, in this method, we're placing a pipe inside of an existing pipe.
That's correct.
So we're reducing the capacity of the existing pipe. Is that going to be a problem?
We actually, we reduce the diameter of the pipe, but the capacity actually increases because the existing pipes are real short segments, so every time you have a joint, it creates friction and reduces the amount it can carry. The new pipe is jointless and much smoother than the existing pipe, so it actually increases our capacity.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ohr?
Could you speak to the cost savings? I think that's important for us to speak about, the cost savings from doing it this way as opposed to the traditional way of having to go in and dig up streets and, I know it's obvious, but there's actually a figure.
Yes, and the difference between this rehabilitation method of trenchless and full excavation, we see the trenchless is about one-third the cost of full excavation.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
No.
Any from the public? You have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2017-027.
Second.
Motion and second vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Item D.
Item D, award of various Public Works On-Call Professional Services contracts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, Henry Hatch. Again, I really going to just turn this to Mr. Steve Oros. This is another good thing that we are doing, basically with your approval, the process would improve so we can increase customer service and increase efficiency, saving lots of money at the same time and staff time. Well, I'll let Mr. Oros to give you the details. Been months and months of work done by staff, Mr. Oros, his staff, our city engineer, everybody else, to go through the process to come to where we are today. And traditionally, what we do, for the most part, not always, when we need an engineering consultant, basically professional service, we need to go through their requests or proposals, receive the consultants, spend much time and effort and expenses to prepare it and provide it to us. They go through them, screen them, so it takes months and months before we can come to you for your approval. With this process, all of that, group of consultants in all different areas have been reviewed, staff, basically the selection has been based on their qualification and certification and everything else. So we have a list, so when we do need professional service, again, that doesn't apply to everything. For the most part, we can go simply to the list and call one and start the service in days rather than within months. Let Mr. Oros to go really through the details, what we have gone to get to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. The item before you today has a total of 35 separate on-call contracts covering 17 professional service areas. And what we've done is that we've, late last fall, early in the, over the winter, we had some qualifications requests sent out to the engineering community for these professional services areas to pre-qualify basically a variety of firms in each of these areas. The review teams that reviewed all the submittals, we had a big shopping cart full of submittals. It was quite impressive. Pre-qualified a number of firms in each area depending on the anticipated workload over the next three years. Again, that was a staff estimate and we'll see how this goes in the next cycle after this first three-year cycle pans out. This is a fairly new process for the city, but like as Henry mentioned, the goal of this system is to provide better customer service, be more efficient in our project delivery system, and to save staff time and essentially money for the city. Henry mentioned that the process that we have been going through takes usually upwards of four to six months to get a consultant on board to start a project. With these on-call contracts, we can get started with fairly straightforward work, as-needed work, in a matter of days to maybe a month or so. It's a very streamlined process because the contracts you're considering today would allow a upper limit for each of these firms in each of these areas. It's not a guarantee of payment to the consultants, it's not a commitment on the city to pay these dollars. It's basically a limit so that as we come up with a project that we need some consultant assistance on, say it's a $3,000 project or a $15,000 project, within those categories, we can have the ability to just negotiate the scope and fee with the consultant and get the contract and move forward. This doesn't limit us to only these firms, is the other point we want to make. The process is that as projects come up in our system, based on the priority, we evaluate, is this a good fit for our on-call list or do we send out a request for qualifications as we traditionally do? So you still will see a mixture of contracts as they come forward, but we're trying to streamline this process. We have a project right now that we're following through this and less than a month ago, we have started negotiations with a consultant to do a design for a water tank and we're all ready to bring the contract before council. So that's a much streamlined process of delivery of projects. And the amounts of the contracts for each of the firms vary. Again, we took an estimate based on the type of work in that issue area. Inspection fees may be, assistance in inspection services is a slightly higher number than what we anticipate in landscape architecture assistance. So that's why there's a variety of numbers for each of the consultants. When with that, I have any questions, be glad to answer them.
Questions, comments from the council?
I have one.
Yes.
In your analysis in selecting different companies, how important was it for your design team to consider companies from the Prescott area opposed to outside the Prescott area?
Very good question. There was a wait for experience in the Prescott, Yavapai County area. There was a weight for experience in the Prescott, Yavapai County area. Wasn't necessarily to have an office here that gave you an unnecessary advantage, but we did wait experience with the city as a high value. This did not preclude firms from outside the area or inside the area. The, a lot of these issue areas are specialized. We don't have a lot of archaeological firms that are up here. We don't have a lot of electrical design firms up here. So, there's, a lot of these are specialty areas that we have to go outside of the city to procure those services anyway, so we just wanted to get the best qualified firms for our work.
I, I can appreciate that, but I, I also appreciate the fact that we're looking at our local folks first. They have people that work in their offices, they have families here that-
Absolutely.
-have groceries and cars and stuff that are purchased here, rather than giving somebody from out of town the money and not having it re-span in our economic world. I, I think it's important, so thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award the on-call professional services contract listed on attachment A.
Second. Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item E?
Item E, approval of SI 16-005 site plan for 12 residential units in six separate duplex buildings and water service agreement number 16-012, city contract number 2017-012, zoning multifamily medium, APN 110-05-002V, property owner Robinson Duplexes LLC.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor, this first project from planning and zoning is a, called the Robinson Duplexes. It's a six-unit or 12-unit, six duplex development off of Robinson Drive. As you know, Robinson Drive connects to East Gurley Street, closer to the intersection with 69 and 89. The zoning application or the zoning around the project is compatible with the surrounding area. We're talking about the area in red for this 12-unit or six-unit duplex project. It's multifamily medium to the north, multifamily high to the east, and surrounded by a single-family 35. Because of that single-family 35 zoning, as the site comes to site plan development later on, we will require, the code requires, additional landscaping along the perimeter with the single-family zoning district for what we call residential protection standards. The site plan layout is very basic. The site is actually very steep, and because of that, there's going to be two separate entrances off of Robinson Drive. The first including two duplex buildings for a total of the four units, and the remainder of the buildings on the perimeter through their own access drive. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the project and the site plan, and it made a recommendation for approval, and I believe the Water Issues Committee also made a recommendation for 12 acre feet of water for this project. If you have any questions, I'm here, and so is the developer.
I have one question, mayor. In evaluating this project, have you looked at the traffic flow from this development onto, down Robinson onto Gurley?
Yes. The, in order to get down to Gurley, if you go straight down Robinson, there's no way you're making a left. I did it, and it's not safe.
Well, people do it.
People do it.
We got, I got a comment, maybe the other members of the council too, with a suggestion that a sign be put somewhere up Robinson or before you get to Gurley that says "No Left Turn at Gurley." Unfortunately, Public Works left the room, so they can't hear this, but-
I will certainly pass that on. I will certainly pass that on. Most people go down Robinson, turn left, and come in behind the, was it the gas station right there to traffic?
You go up.
You go up and around.
Excuse me, councilwoman, that was referred to the city traffic engineer, your inquiry and suggestion-
Oh, good.
-was so.
Thank you.
We, we are awaiting the response on that signage.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve site plan SI 16-005.
Second.
Motion and second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Mayor, I move to approve city water service agreement number 16-012.
Second.
Motion and second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Next item?
Item F, approval of CC 16-002 comprehensive sign plan for Thumbute Medical Center zoning neighborhood, zoning neighborhood-oriented business, APN 106-20-433, owner Husana Skari, 3191 Stillwater Drive, Prescott, Arizona 86305.
Thank you. This comprehensive sign plan, as you know, comprehensive sign plans are proposed for development projects, shopping centers, individual sites, that request to have zoning, or excuse me, signs, either freestanding wall sign or a combination of all of them, in excess or in a different standard than was traditionally allowed by the Land Development Code by right. The trade-off that you get with a comprehensive sign plan is uniformity in design. Some sort of, yes, I want more signage, I want it taller, I want it a different shape, but you get a higher quality sign, and at least the goal is to get a higher quality sign and more uniformity of sign over the, in this case, a medical park. As you, most of us know it as the marketplace at the crossing, but now it's being called Thumbute Medical Center, because as you see it develop today, and I know many of you have seen the new buildings rise, they are all medical buildings. So, site is owned by a doctor, and that's his mission for the, for the site. The applicant with a local sign company came before the Planning and Zoning Commission and presented both the freestanding sign that you see here, no, the sign is not going in the middle of the street, that's just a close-up example. I actually had that question. The initials, this is the initial sign, and I say initial for, and I'll explain that in a minute. The location of the sign is down the Tide Street a little bit. Because of the right-of-way along Willow Lake Road, Willow Creek Road, there is no, no place. The sign's slightly taller than what would normally be allowed. They're asking for 17-foot-high sign versus a 12-foot-high sign, and they're asking for 60 square feet of signed, freestanding sign versus the normally allowed 32 square foot because of the number of medical businesses that are going to be on the site. Planning and Zoning Commission did discuss this, and they voted four to three to recommend approval. Even though that was a favorable vote, the applicant went back to his client, the sign company went back to his client, and changed the freestanding sign a little bit. The main concern for the four to three vote was that it was a bit too busy. There were too many panels. It would have been a distraction to people at that busy intersection, and they felt that it just was too much for safety at that intersection. So, when they came back with a redesign, as a courtesy, I took it before the Planning and Zoning Commission. It wasn't on their normal agenda, but they did discuss it, and they reached a consensus that they, one, appreciated the new design, and they reached a general consensus, unanimous consensus, that they, they liked the new design better. And then, as the wall signs for the uniformity-type design, you see the freestanding sign, and then you see the individual wall signs. Normally, in this zoning district, you would be allowed 50 to 100 square feet, depending on the linear footage of your building. They're proposing about 40 square feet for each building, so they're not overdoing the signage. They really want to focus on the entrance signage. One interesting thing about the freestanding sign is because it's down the hill a little bit, the extra height, if you were standing on Willow Lake Road, is actually relatively close to what the sign height would have been if it had it sat on Willow Creek Road. That's it.
Is that a spilling error on the building?
Yes, it is. B-U-T-E, B-U-T-T-E. Of course, these are all just renderings.
Okay.
Did they get the freestanding right? Yep, they did. They got the freestanding sign correct. Stuff and shame on you.
Highly trained observer.
Mayor Protem, you have a question?
Well, I didn't have a question. I had a comment, being liaison on the P&amp;Z, that I think it's important that when this went back to the P&amp;Z, while it wasn't required, the P&amp;Z were very appreciative that the owner and the sign company took it upon themselves to listen to what the P&amp;Z had to say and went back and addressed all their concerns and brought back a more favorable solution.
You have other questions, comments from the council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Montana Drive here, right, that's coming into Willow-
Yes, ma'am.
That, that intersection there and going into, I go into the Dollar Store a lot, and it kind of has a-
Yes.
-a swell there. Will that be, I mean, it's kind of precarious coming in and out of there sometimes.
It is, and that was one of the concerns about, from the Planning and Zoning Commission, was that the number of panels just being so busy-
Right.
-that people would be trying to focus in on the sign instead of paying attention to that intersection and that drive down into the Dollar Store or the medical park.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the revised comprehensive sign plan CC 16-002 for Thumbute Medical Center.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item G, approval of purchase of one each 2016 Caterpillar 930M wheel loader and one each 2016 Caterpillar 938M wheel loader from Empire Cat using City of Tucson contract number 120377 pricing in a total amount of $363,249.56. City contract number 2017-021, solid waste fund, 1% streets.
Mayor and council, good afternoon. This item requests the purchase of two new loaders. One is going to be for the solid waste division, and one will be for the street maintenance division. The solid waste division uses their loader daily in a transfer station, and it's in use almost eight hours a day, and the street, or, street maintenance division uses their loader almost daily. It's at the other end of the yard, and it's busy loading materials into trucks for transportation to various road projects. The loaders that are being replaced are being replaced with like-kind loaders having similar specifications. The two loaders that are being replaced also are being used as trade-in on the new equipment, and funding is available in the FY '17 budgets for streets and also for solid waste to replace these two loaders. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Councilwoman Lozelle?
Thank you, mayor. Stephanie, I just wanted to comment that I think that's an understatement that that Caterpillar at the transfer station is used. I mean, it is used.
It is used.
And it's used. I mean, it goes, it never stops.
No. I brought a picture. You want to see it?
In fact, I looked at it the other day. I'm like, I can't believe the tires are still on that thing.
Oh, yeah. This thing gets used like crazy. I think it should come up in a minute. Oops.
There it is.
Yeah, it gets used like crazy, and we, we just go through them about every four years. They're worn out.
Stephanie, I just want to confirm, we're, we're buying this from Empire Cat, which is a business located in the city of Prescott, and we're paying $11,928.30, $63.06 in sales tax.
Yes, councilwoman. The, both pieces are being bought through the regional office, Empire Cat here in Prescott, and therefore the city should, will pay and receive back that tax.
Yes. Great. Thanks.
The city tax, sorry. Just the city portion, yeah.
All right.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2017-021.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Passes unanimously.
Next item?
Item H, approval of purchase of one each 2017 Peterbilt Refuge chassis from Rush Truck Center and one each Scorpion side load body from Arizona Refuge Sales using City of Tempe contract number T15-097-01 pricing in a total amount of $270,505.15. City contract number 2017-026, solid waste fund.
Mayor and council, this item is requesting the purchase of a new automated side-loading collection vehicle for the solid waste division. The solid waste division uses automatic side-loading vehicles daily to collect more than 31,000 containers citywide. These vehicles require regular maintenance to ensure reliability and maximum useful lives, and as they age, they require, or they suffer failures that require repair and replacement. And these repairs and replacements escalate each year that the vehicle is in service. These trucks get used just about as much as that loader does in the transfer station. The, the vehicle that's being replaced will be sold at the next city auction, and funding is available in the current fiscal year budget for the replacement truck. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2017-026.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Passes unanimously.
Next item?
Item I, approval of purchase of two each Scorpion side load bodies from Arizona Refuge Sales using HGAC contract number RH08-14 pricing in a total amount of $232,368.49. City contract number 2017-025, solid waste fund.
Mayor and council, this item requests approval to purchase two new bodies only for two side loaders. The, two side loaders that these bodies will go on just went through drivetrain overhauls last fiscal year, so basically, when these two bodies are put on these two trucks, we'll have almost a, a brand-new vehicle that should last us five to seven years. We have been refurbishing solid waste trucks for about seven years now, I believe, and the refurbished trucks have been working exceptionally well. They've proven to be reliable, and they're also efficient when they perform their daily routes. And the bodies coming off of the two trucks would be sold at the next auction, and funding is available in the fiscal year '17 budget. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve contract number 2017-025.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
What's the last item? And I guess I'll give my little thought for the day. As you know, we just had the Republican Convention, we're having the Democratic Convention this, this week, and as we look at the folks that are being petitioned forward to be our possible presidential candidates, I think James Madison had a very good comment. The Constitution should protect the people from the frailty of their rulers. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.